Item 10D, adopt a resolution approving a sanitary sewer lateral replacement program in the Crestmore neighborhood.
Okay. The item before you here tonight is a proposed sanitary sewer replacement program in the Crestmore neighborhood. The situation up in the Crestmore neighborhood is variable across the whole neighborhood in terms of where the sewer laterals fall on certain residential lots, and I'll get into that in a little bit of detail. But we believe that the program that we're presenting here tonight is a positive solution to some of those challenges related to the sewers in the neighborhood. And what I wanted to do was quickly just give an overview of the program and then talk a little bit of detail related to some of the existing conditions up in the neighborhood. So, as an overview, the proposed sanitary sewer replacement program, we think will help maintain the integrity of the public sewer system. It'll help eradicate some of the private Orangeburg sewer laterals that you heard about earlier by encouraging their replacement. It'll help address issues related to the settlement agreement that the city entered into with the Regional Water Quality Control Board as a result of the Baykeeper lawsuit in 2010. It's consistent with existing private lateral replacement program already in the city, and it provides benefit to residents to the maximum extent possible without using the PG&E trust funds for improvements on private property. And with the exception of incidental installation of sewer cleanouts that have been performed to date in some of the lots, particularly in Phase Two of the project that was recently completed, as well as a payment of some permit fees for the homes that have been rebuilt, no trust monies to date have been used for private improvements. This program, we think, provides public benefit by reducing potential of sanitary sewer overflows, infiltration and inflow caused by faulty laterals into the public sewer system. So what I wanted to do is take a second and talk about the existing conditions that are up in the neighborhood. This exhibit shows a typical home in the neighborhood. The sewer main out on the street and the sewer lateral. This shows a cleanout here right inside the property line. The cleanouts are and have been installed in some locations in the neighborhood, but a majority of residents do not have cleanouts, sewer cleanouts. And why that is worth pointing out is a couple reasons. The sewer lateral really has two components, the upper lateral, which is the lateral within the private property, and then the lower lateral, which is the lateral, portion of the lateral within the public street. If there is no cleanout installed on a property, per the city's ordinance, the resident has the maintenance responsibility for that sewer lateral from their home to the sewer main. If there is a cleanout installed, the city takes over the maintenance responsibility from the cleanout to the sewer main with essentially the maintenance responsibility of the lower lateral. This is a slightly different view of the same thing. What you see here is meant to show what we think is the existing conditions based upon the work that we've done in Phase Two, as well as discussion with many of the residents in the neighborhood. So what we have is, originally when the subdivision was constructed, the original developer put the streets in, he put a clay sewer pipe sewer main in the road, and then he stubbed a clay sewer lateral up to the property line, okay? They go in, they put the streets in, put the utilities in, and then they have vacant lots, finished lots, and then the builders come back and build the homes. So when the builders built the homes, they constructed the house, and then they, out of the house was a cast iron pipe. Typically, there's a cleanout at the house, and then they use this Orangeburg material for the sewer lateral itself from the home to the clay pipe essentially just inside the property line. In most locations, the original builder, it looks like, did not install cleanouts. There is a connection there, but it's in 99% of the cases, it's buried underground. It's more a T-connection than a cleanout. What has occurred over the years is people, as they have replaced their upper lateral, have installed cleanouts in some instances, as well as people that have undertaken some of the beautification projects that was referred to earlier, replacing their driveways, they took that opportunity to replace their Orangeburg laterals as well. We don't know this as a fact, but we're fairly certain based upon what we've encountered and the discussions with the folks in the neighborhood, that all of the homes up there are, their laterals are Orangeburg, given the vintage of this construction as well as the experience of the residents. We have done a great deal of outreach to the neighborhood to date. This drawing that's shown up here, it's not meant for you to glean any detail off of. This is our working drawing that shows our tally of what the existing conditions are up there, and essentially what we're looking at is which homes we have verified that have Orangeburg pipe. Those are the ones that are shaded orange. You probably can't see that color too well on this drawing. The other differentiation there is which properties have the sewer laterals going through lawns or turf areas, which sewer laterals fall within driveways, of the ones that fall within driveways, which driveways are decorative paving or paver blocks, which ones are concrete, which ones are old concrete versus, you know, newer replaced concrete driveways. And where that becomes important is when we talk about installing cleanouts on the property, we, as part of this project, will install the cleanout on the property, within the property, and do a small amount of surface restoration. When I say "surface restoration," we have to excavate out the driveway, put in the new cleanout, and then return the surface to it as close to its original condition as possible. If that surface is decorative paving, or paver blocks, or, you know, stamped concrete, it's a little hard for us to restore that back to its original condition. In that instance, we're giving the property owner the option of not having a cleanout installed. We do not have to install cleanouts. Let me take a step back and talk about a typical sewer replacement project within the city, and Mastic Avenue project was one that, is a fairly recent one that the council may remember. So what happens on a typical sewer replacement project is the city comes in and, going back to this exhibit, the city comes in and replaces the sewer main and the lower lateral. And at that point, they make the connection to the existing sewer lateral, the existing upper lateral. Now, as long as the pipe is in good condition that they're hooking up to, that we're hooking up to, we can make that connection. Typically, the cost of a cleanout is, as well as the cost of TV-ing the upper lateral to ascertain its condition, that is a responsibility of the property owner because it's all on private property. So, on a typical project, if the owner wants a cleanout and wants to see the condition of their upper lateral, that's a responsibility that they bear. For this project, as we did on Phase Two, and we're doing on Phase Three, we're going above and beyond that, and when we, when our contractor installs, excavates out this lower lateral, gets up to the property line, he is TV-ing up the private lateral to ascertain its condition. So we have, we will be getting and have those results of the TV once they get to the lateral. We're also offering the property owner the option of us, with our contract, installing the cleanout. Again, it's typically done, it's typically a responsibility of the property owner, not paid for by the city. So those are two things that we did on Phase Two and will be doing on Phase Three. This current project is, again, offering the cleanout and TV-ing the upper lateral. Again, the advantage of the property owner electing to have the cleanout installed is it relieves them of the maintenance responsibility for that lower lateral from the cleanout to the main. The disadvantage for some property owners may be what I referred to earlier, which is the surface restoration. If a property owner, like in this example, if that driveway is decorative paving, okay? We're going to go in, excavate out around where the cleanout goes and install the cleanout. We're going to replace a six-foot by six-foot section of the driveway. It's awful difficult for us to match that existing material, particularly if it is a fancy surface. So, in that instance, as we encountered on Phase Two, many residents elected to not have the cleanout installed. Again, it's not a requirement. The other thing that I wanted to talk about was a little bit of misinformation that I think got out into the neighborhood unfortunately, and that is that if there is Orangeburg pipe on the upper lateral, it doesn't mean that we cannot connect to it. We can connect to Orangeburg pipe. As long as it's in good shape and functioning, there's no reason why we can't connect to it. What we do want to make sure that the residents understand is that Orangeburg pipe is a material that's no longer used. It is subject to degradation over the years, and if you're not having a problem with it now, you may in the future. So it's a good opportunity with this project for the resident to take advantage of potentially replacing that upper lateral if it is Orangeburg. And then quickly, just to summarize the status or the remaining sanitary sewer laterals within the neighborhood, we replaced, I believe, 93 lower laterals with the Phase Two project. So that leaves a remainder of 281 laterals. Of those, we've got 15 in Estates Drive. Those were constructed in the 1980s, early 1980s. Those, from what we can see, are in good shape, they're not Orangeburg pipe. So those upper laterals probably will not, there's no need to replace those. There's 36 homes scattered throughout the neighborhood that have previously replaced Orangeburg pipe and installed new cleanouts. There's 15 that have previously installed new cleanouts we have not verified, and we'll be able to verify for certain, again, until we TV, get to there to replace a lower lateral and TV whether they replace their lateral. We haven't verified that with the property owners yet. We've got 106 that are beneath lawn areas. Again, that's simpler in terms of installing the cleanout. We've got the next four categories, and they're colored there in orange because, you know, they're the ones that are a little bit more concerned, 33 laterals beneath stamped or decorative concrete, 46 laterals beneath concrete, and 26 laterals beneath newly installed pavers. And then we've got four laterals that are beneath retaining walls. So that's just meant to sort of illustrate, you know, the existing conditions. So, and that brings us to the proposed sewer lateral replacement program. So this is consistent with the existing sewer replacement program that I believe the city has in the Rollingwood Basin that was a result of the settlement with Baykeeper and the negotiations with the regional board. And that is to replace or to pay for up to one-half the cost of the lateral replacement for a maximum of $1,700 for the replacement of the upper private laterals. The typical replacement costs in the neighborhood that we've seen, they range from $5,000 to $10,000, okay? So in most instances, the $1,700 probably won't cover half the cost. The $5,000 to $10,000, it's a large gap, it's a big variable, a lot of it depends on what surface you're having to replace when you replace that lateral. The other option for actually open cutting the sewer lateral is to do pipe bursting, and a lot of plumbers will do pipe bursting. Again, pipe bursting has some drawbacks, potential drawbacks, particularly where the pipe is shallow as it approaches the house, but even if you do the pipe bursting, you still have to excavate a area around the connection to the house, as well as the area around the cleanout where you make the connection to the lateral that we are replacing. What we're proposing with this program is that it be retroactive to anyone who has replaced their Orangeburg laterals since the explosion in 2010, and that it remain in place ongoing until the completion of our restoration work within the neighborhood, which is currently estimated about January of 2015. Ideally, as we go through and put the sewer laterals in with this current project, that would be the opportune time for people to take advantage of the program and replace their Orangeburg lateral if they wish to do so. The other thing is we're recommending that the work be performed by private contractors and plumbers, and that's for a couple different reasons. One is, we've got a public contract for all the work within the public right-of-way. It's not a good idea to have our contractor do work on private property, particularly as part of our public contract. I know in the past, I think the city has offered the city's contractor contract independently and separately with a property owner to replace their upper lateral. Our contractor, JMB, who is on this project, has indicated that they would prefer not to do that, that they would just like to keep the work within the public right-of-way. So that's a sort of, believe it or not, very quick overview of the situation up there. Be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Questions of Harry. Ken?
Here's first the easy one. Typically, how much of a right-of-way goes into the property from, say, the sidewalk? Is it about five feet or more?
Up in this neighborhood, from the back of sidewalk to the property line, varies from the narrow streets, three and a half feet, to four and a half feet for the wider streets.
So that, so you eliminate that three and a half to four and a half feet, and then you place a cleanout?
That is correct.
Okay. And then my $60,000 question is, what would be, has there been an estimate as to replacing, using the trust to replace all the laterals?
We provided an estimate in the staff report. If every potential home took advantage of this proposed $1,700 program, it'd be a little over half a million dollars. So if, and that's at $1,700, if you essentially triple that, you know, to get to your average price of a lateral, you know, you're probably looking at one and a half million dollars.
The reason why I bring this up, and this is sort of food for thought, is that we did originally look into the idea of undergrounding utilities, and that would have been a lot more considerable as far as being on private property. So that takes me into, you made a statement saying that we don't, we have not gone onto private property, use the money, use the trust money on private property. So I'm trying to get a better grasp on why that's significant, and why, in this unique case, in this, you know, situation, why we're trying to avoid that. And I guess I'm gonna, while you're still, I'm gonna, you know, the elephant's sitting in the room. There's money in the trust, and for everyone's knowledge, that money is there to restore that neighborhood.
Yeah.
And so if there is money, I mean, it can't be spent on anywhere else, and so if there's a, like, a longer-term usage of that money, then I can say, okay, well, then maybe we ought to hold back on some and, you know, and use it for, you know, for other projects. But I hate to think that we end up with, you know, an excess amount of trust money that could have been used on private property.
So Harry's presentation described the various conditions on private properties within the neighborhood, and as I think he articulated and laid out, there is a variety of different circumstances and a variety of different costs. Just trying to do a little bit of mental calculation, when he indicated earlier roughly three times the $1,700, or three, that would essentially cover, on average, a third of the cost. I'm not sure that we've done the math here, but we, I think you could quickly evaluate that that would, that would, that calculation would get you at roughly $5,000, which would be at the low end of the range for some of those private properties where extensive front yard improvements, and particularly concrete or paving improvements have been made. The city would, if it, depending on how you would like to structure a program, if you were going to do that, I would strongly recommend that it not be done by the city because you run into all sorts of different issues associated with work on private property. Even doing it by reimbursement basis, you end up with a pretty differential level, a pretty different level of participation that you would be providing to individual property owners, depending on choices that they made utilizing, in many cases, funds that were provided previously by PG&E. So, in any case, we have, we, staff's recommendation was intended to provide a program that would provide a level amount of benefit, that would provide an opportunity for residents in this neighborhood to receive a significant benefit of the installation of the cleanout, and then to work with property owners to, again, to try and improve their situation based on their individual choices. Council certainly reserves the right to amend or to take the recommendation or not take the recommendation. We see a great deal of complexity in trying to deal with the variety of different situations that, and that was the primary reason for the recommendation. I'm going to add one more thing, and I hesitated to say this before, but Harry is encouraging me to say it, and that is that the $50 million trust fund was negotiated specifically for the city's costs associated with public improvements in the neighborhood and the rebuild of the public infrastructure. It is the city council's general direction to staff that we want to assure that the maximum level of infrastructure rehabilitation is provided as a result of the circumstances that occurred in this neighborhood, and it is with that direction that we've pursued now into the third phase of the rebuild of all of the public infrastructure, sewer, streets, stormwater, water, throughout the entire neighborhood. There is no specific provision in the trust arrangement that work on private property would be contemplated. Now, there's an argument that as part of the trust fund's utilization, there would be, we would need to evaluate with the trustee and with the program defined by the city council and to identify what the, essentially, the thought process behind that program would be. And again, $1,700, as Harry, I think, thoughtfully articulated, provides a program that is consistent with something that's been done elsewhere in the city. That may or may not be the right number that the city council might wish to include in this particular program and with the use of the trust funds.
Okay. First of all, I don't want to jeopardize the, you know, the use of the trust fund. I don't want, you know, if it's, you know, obviously you're going to have to clarify that if, in fact, the council gives direction to go onto private property. When you outline a program that we know is going to cost $5,000 to $10,000, and you're going to reimburse $1,700 because it is a typical program, this is not a typical program. This is not a typical neighborhood. This is, this neighborhood did not ask to have the infrastructure replaced, and as much as they will probably, in the long term, appreciate the infrastructure being replaced, I don't think they anticipated $5,000 to $10,000 and up as far as restoration, you know, to continue on living in this neighborhood, albeit it will be probably the safest neighborhood in San Bruno, if not in San Mateo County. But I just think with the money that we have and the money that is tagged for the neighborhood, that we should give them as much as we can on a average basis, because there are going to be some cases where, you know, it's going to exceed that, but I think we need to give them more than $1,700. And I throw that out to my colleagues.
All right. I'll catch it. I guess the, you know, we're trying to be fair here and trying to live within the agreement, but I guess the bottom line is, if the explosion didn't occur, we wouldn't be having this discussion. And so, you know, my feeling is that, you know, you can't just go $5,000 or $10,000 a property, but I think it has to be significantly more than $1,700 for those that really want to participate in this. I think Harry mentioned the fact that they don't have to put the cleanout if they don't want to, but if you do, I would like the city, the city manager and staff to look to the trustee, and maybe PG&E to see the parameters of what we might be able to use this for. As I said, we would, if it wasn't for the explosion, we wouldn't be having this discussion tonight.
Do the chair. I was going to say on the $1,700, I know that was probably by on staff's part, just to say, okay, we already have a precedent, we have something established, so let's piggyback off that. And honestly, when you get to the $5,000 or $10,000, $1,700, let's say it's to the $10,000, which is easy enough depending upon what type of excavation, how long the install's going to be, and et cetera, and the backfill and concrete if that's necessary. There's also the permits, so I didn't know if that was going to be something that was also on the homeowner to have to get, or if that was something the city would provide in addition to the cleanout and the video. It's already been echoed, but I think $1,700 is not a lot, and let me tell you, it takes, it's very quick when you start talking about labor, and by the time you excavate and install and backfill and all that stuff, it adds up quickly, especially if there's concrete involved. So I think I would suggest that we go back and we look at something that's correct and right for this area and for the situation. I know we already had a program in place, but again, enough of us been through the situation, we know what they've had to deal with, and we're still trying to get it all back together. And so I think how we can assist in trying to get that taken care of does two things. It, excuse me, it helps us with SSOs, it helps us in other ways, and I know the Orangeburg too, if, in other cities, when they video it, if there's a crack or there's a lump, the whole thing has to be replaced. There's no ends of servus. I know in a city to the north, they offer $2,500, and the city to the south, they offer $5,000 through their sewer lateral program. So, and this is something as far as when it comes to the selling of the homes, you know, so if we do do the videoing, I'd like to see a DVD produced, I'd like to see it given to the homeowners so that they can have that as a useful tool if they're asked to produce that as far as through the period of time that's allowed to keep that valid if they should sell or if they wanted to utilize that for them, since we're doing that. I think that's another thing we could do, and then again, the permits were the other question.
In terms of the permits for the lateral replacement itself, I don't think we've had that level of discussion at the staff level, but...
We wouldn't expect to charge permit fees. There are permit fees associated with that. There are permit fees associated with that type of work typically, but that would certainly be something that, for a program like this, we would, we would, consistent with the council's previous action to waive permit fees associated with the rebuilding of the homes, I would certainly see that as being a clear opportunity to benefit homeowners.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, 'cause you have a building, you have encroachment, so those add up too, and then having to go down and take care of that. So I think if we've been, that we can already say, we have been consistent in that, so we should continue that and help the area save on that as well.
Irene?
I have a couple of questions and concerns. I, too, think seventeen hundred dollars is kind of a very small drop in a very big bucket, so I would like us to think of how we can increase that without jeopardizing the trust. But also, what is the timeline for this? If we delay this too much longer, is it going to jeopardize people's ability to have, you know, their laterals done simultaneously with the contractor that we're having now?
Yeah, I was just consulting with Harry about that, because my thought at this point would be to, we wanted to get this to you as quickly as possible, partly because this has been a strong issue of interest and concern to the neighborhood, given that we've had a couple of neighborhood meetings, or at least one neighborhood meeting, now that we've begun the, as we were beginning, and now that we've begun the Phase Three reconstruction project. You have numbers of residents in the audience tonight demonstrating evidence of that concern and interest. At the same time, we wanted to make sure that we could coordinate effectively with the project as our city contractor is moving through the neighborhood, so that disruption is, again, contained to the minimum possible. That said, we believe that returning to you on September tenth will not jeopardize those considerations, and that we could certainly take the city council's comment, as we've heard it so far, into consideration and to bring you back the information that you're discussing and requesting. So we believe that we could take a little bit more time, although time does remain relatively of the essence, primarily to coordinate with this project, and frankly, to put the minds of the residents at ease and not leave this issue lingering out over their heads.
If I may, do we have enough staff? Well, I know the city doesn't have enough staff, but is there enough staffing available to do some of the things that you're talking about and kind of capture some of the difficulties and the complexities? If we, if we say pay for everything, or pay for half of every, whatever it costs, it's labor-intensive as far as staffing goes. Do we need to staff up for that, or can Perry, do you have somebody who can do it? I don't want us to make a decision and then find out there's nobody actually carry out the decision.
Yeah, I think in terms of the staffing to administer this or to manage it, we have staff, we have two full-time inspectors, a resident engineer and a full-time inspector out in the field. They're the ones that have been doing a lot of this legwork that produced, you know, both this working drawing as well as this summary here. So I think in terms of managing the program, yes, we have adequate staff.
Okay.
Again, depending on the details of the program, if it is like we have recommended here tonight, that we don't have city contractors perform the work, then we're really in a situation where the private property owner performs the work, submits their invoices to us to review to make sure that, you know, everything's above board, and then we work out the reimbursement accordingly.
Okay. I agree with you on not having a city contractor get...
Michael, anything?
Yeah, Harry, so can you kind of elaborate on the level of effort in terms of doing this upper lateral work in conjunction with the lower lateral work that we're already on board? Is there significantly more effort if this is, if, say, that part of the work is already done, or if somebody chooses to do it farther down the road?
Yeah, no, that's a good question. Ideally, it would occur at the same time, primarily because, again, if we're, if I can find the cursor here, there we go. Primarily, if we're excavating up to the property line to install the lower lateral, we're gonna have a hole right there, especially if they like to put a cleanout in. So we're gonna have a hole right there. That's the time for them to either, you know, pipe burst or open cut their lateral back up to the house. That way, we're not digging two holes in the future. Now, is it prohibitive? Absolutely not. What we can do, even if there's, it's a concrete driveway or decorative paving, we can always put a temporary surface down, asphalt. We did that on Phase Two for several of the residents, where we excavated up, installed their cleanout, put temporary asphalt down, and then the future came back and did the surface restoration. They could do the same thing, come back, install the upper lateral, and then the surface restoration could occur at the end of the project, or at a future date.
And the sort of finishing touches that we've discussed before, where we repaved the roadway, fixed the sidewalks and everything, wouldn't impact the cleanout, because the cleanout would be completely on the private property?
That is correct.
Okay.
Kathy, did you have a question?
Would it help to get the residents to submit their bids? Because I know we have a network in our neighborhood, and some of the neighbors have, might have a plumbing company, and they have offered discounts to other neighbors. So would it help if we could get you bids on what it's gonna cost each house? And if you have the addresses, most of them are on the lawn, through the lawn, but we, I mean, if we knew who they were, I could go and let them know that we need an estimate if they want to get that done. So just let me know if that'll help.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Michael?
It may actually be useful if we sort of triaged that list. We know that the lawn ones are gonna be fairly easy to do, but if we could get some indication from the homeowners on the remaining properties, if it's something they would even be willing to do, it might make our decision a lot easier if we know what exactly we're dealing with.
Yes.
Hi. I'm John McLaughlin. I live on Claremont. And first of all, I want to applaud you for taking this on, because I think it's very important. And our circumstances are a little different. We made a decision, when we had the driveway replaced, to go ahead and have the orangeberg scoped and have it replaced. It was a choice of spending a moderate amount of money now or spending a larger, much larger amount of money later. And so we made that decision. So that's kind of water under the bridge for us. I am really concerned about the, my neighbors in our neighborhood who are going to really feel they've been sucker punched when they get hit with this and the cost, and they're thinking, you know, I never contemplated doing this, and the only reason I'm doing it is somebody blew up our neighborhood. So I think anything you can do to give them relief would be wonderful. It, you know, orangeberg, you know, hindsight's wonderful, it probably never should have been used. It's great for skyscrapers. You go to the Pentagon, it's orangeberg. You go to the Empire State Building, it's orangeberg. But under your driveways, like in our particular case, not good. The other thing, the final thing I'd like to mention, is you're talking about private contractors doing it. It would be great if some of the local plumbers could get some of this business. There's a lot of good plumbers doing business in San Bruno, many of them live in our city. And each of us that have dealt with them can tell you that this particular plumber did a good job. And we're very happy with the one that did our work. We, I talked to other people, they're very happy with the plumber that did their work. It'd be very nice if some of that business could go their way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to segue into what that gentleman just said. I believe if we're, if this council decides to significantly supplement this work, I think, within the law, I think we should, we should make a concerted effort to qualify When it gets out that the city may be funding X amount of sewer laterals, they're gonna be inundated in that neighborhood. I mean, there's gonna be business cards, there's gonna be plumbers all over the place. And I believe that we need to be prudent in, you know, minimizing that and hopefully making sure that we do have the type of contractors that the gentleman just stated, you know, local, reputable, proven. And so my other question was, is there other options that may not have to, you know, that you can say, abandon a lateral in order to save a driveway and possibly go into the lawn, you know, with a new lateral? I mean, are there, you know, versus, you know, versus pipe bursting? You know, can you address that?
Yeah, unfortunately, the lateral location is driven by where the plumbing comes out of, the main sewer pipe comes out of the house. So for example, in this exhibit here, we're assuming that the main sewer connection out of the house, comes out of the house or inside the garage, which is typical of a lot of the homes up there. Some of them might be in the, you know, lower right-hand corner of the house, for example, and it goes through the lawn. Others, it might, you know, come out midway through the house. It varies depending on the house itself.
If we're placing new sewer laterals, lower and up, I mean, if we're placing all new lower laterals, I mean, I know it's easier said than done, why couldn't we come further down and just go diagonally towards that one point and totally, and try to, you know, minimize the disruption of any structure? You know, we may tear up a whole landscape area, but, I mean, I think if that's an option, the resident can make that determination.
You have direction?
We have good direction. Thank you very much. We will return with information, to the best of our ability, what we're able to generate by September tenth. We'll be back.
Great.